September 23rd, 2025. It is 6:30, and we are meeting at Falmouth Town Hall. My name is John Drewley. I am the current Chair of the Falmouth Planning Board. Before we begin, I would like to remind everyone that this is a public meeting and is being conducted in accordance with the Massachusetts Open Meeting Law. Please take a moment to silence any mobile devices or electronics to avoid interruptions. Anyone wishing to speak should come to the podium, wait to be recognized by the Chair, and state their name for the record before making remarks. We encourage respectful and constructive dialogue during public comment periods. Thank you. We will now proceed with the first item on the agenda, which is public comment. If anyone wishes to speak about something that is not on the agenda, please come to the podium, state your name, and tell us what you'd like to tell us. No takers. We'll proceed to the first item on the agenda, and that would be minutes. Tom?
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve the September 9th, 2025 Planning Board Minutes as presented.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Thank you. So the first item on our agenda, other than minutes, is approval not required. Applicant is Colley Sites Services LLC. Linda?
Yep, so the plan is in your packets, and it's right up here. It's two combined, two lots into one.
Conveyance.
What?
Conveyance.
Oh, it's a conveyance? Sorry, take it back. It's conveying a portion of property from one property to the other, to the one abutting it. So it meets all the requirements of an A and R, so I recommend endorsement.
Any questions? Can I get a motion?
I move that the Planning Board endorse this A and A plan as presented to us without regard to buildability or zoning compliance.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Thank you. Second item on the agenda is plan of land to create two lots from one lot at 125 Bonnie Lane.
It's Bonnie Lane now?
Wait a minute.
Okay.
What happened to T-Ticket Path?
Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped over.
Okay.
Let's do Mr. Doyle first. Sorry about that. Applicant is John Doyle III. Plan of land to combine two lots into one at 110 T-Ticket Path.
So this plan meets all the requirements of an A and R, so I recommend endorsement.
Thank you. Got a motion?
I move that the Planning Board endorse the A and R plan as presented to us without regard to buildability or zoning compliance.
Second?
Second.
Yeah. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Now we'll go to the third hearing, Cape Cod Islands Engineering. Plan of land to create two lots from one lot at 125 Bonnie Lane.
And again, this plan meets all the requirements of an A and R, so I recommend endorsement.
Thank you. Again, motion? Can I get a?
You can.
Motion for approval?
I move that the Planning Board endorse the A and A plan as presented to us without regard to buildability or zoning compliance.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? No, we have a question? Sure. Sorry. Paul?
Linda?
You got a question?
Which two lots are being combined here?
They're not.
Not clear.
They're being split.
There's four lots here shown.
It's being split.
The one with the really dark lines.
Do you have the stick?
Yeah.
Which one?
She'll show you.
Splitting one lot into two.
So Paul, it's this one lot right here being split into two. So this is one lot now, and this is another lot.
It will be. Actually, approved it.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yep.
Wasn't clear.
Any other questions? We had a motion. We had a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Thank you. Next on our agenda is site plan review application to construct a 3,696 square foot four-bay storage building and associated private parking at 494 Thomas B. Landers Road. Tom?
September 23rd, 2025, from Jed Cornoch, AICP Community Development Director, 59th Town Hall Square, Falmouth, Mass., 02540. Regarding 494 Thomas B. Landers Road Site Plan Review Application. Dear Mr. Cornoch, please accept this letter as a formal request to continue this matter from the Planning Board's September 23rd, 2025 meeting to their October 14th, 2025 meeting. Please do not hesitate to contact me with any questions. Sincerely, Seth Adams.
Thank you.
Just need to make a motion and accept the continuance request.
I move that we accept Seth Thomas's request to continue this hearing to the October 14th meeting.
Thank you. Second, please.
Second.
Second, all right. Thank you. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. So next on our agenda is Philip Westling, Site Plan Review Application to construct a 30-foot by 60-foot addition to an existing 2,500-square-foot research and development building at 19 Pre-Search Road. Tom, can you read the notice, please?
Yes, this was published date for this was September 5th, 2025, and 12 abutters. This was sent by regular mail.
Thank you. And for the applicant?
Good evening. For the record, Raoul Lozardi from Cape Cod Islands Engineering. I'm an engineer at...
Is that me?
Yes.
Could be.
Like I was saying, Raoul Lozardi from Cape Cod Islands Engineering, and the applicant is in the audience for this project. So this project is in addition to an existing development. The last time the Planning Board saw development on this property is for the existing two long buildings at the site. That was an extensive planning review and approval. What the applicant is looking to do at this point is to do an addition to the back of the smaller building. The addition is for a warehouse and storage facility. The site will include some grading to provide a level area for the proposed building. There is drainage proposed for the addition, and calculations for the drainage were presented. The entire facility already has the parking that's required for the uses on the site. The entire site is also landscaped. The back portion of the property will, the bank will be restored after the grading is done, and the slope is stabilized with erosion control blankets. And there's a little portion of pavement that's being increased, or parking that's being increased for two spaces on the northern side. If there's any questions, we'll try to answer.
So you have adequate parking for the addition?
I'm sorry?
You have adequate parking for the addition?
Yes, so the addition is warehouse. It's not really producing additional use. The existing businesses on the property don't even occupy all the available parking spaces, so there's no proposed additional parking spaces shown.
All right, thank you. Questions? Paul?
Could you offer the stormwater runoff and the leaching pits, please?
So right, most of the site on the upper area, existing parking, existing buildings, already controlled runoff from the application from, I believe it was eight years ago. What we're proposing on the south side is dry well, a large dry well for the roof runoff, which is the majority of the project. And then we have a second drainage system consisting of solid catch basins with a leaching pit for that lower paved driveway area that exists on the property that's going to be modified slightly for this project. So the intention for that is a catch basin with a leaching pit, and the intention for the roof runoff is a dry well.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? So we do a motion for approval for the future? Have other questions?
You certainly can. So included in our staff report was an indication that the applicant didn't supply a landscaping plan, but you can see in our comments, given the industrial nature of the site, we didn't think that was appropriate. So if the board agrees, what we'll do is we'll work with the applicant to get just a simple letter requesting the waiver from that requirement. We can put it in the file, and you can have it as part of your decision. One item that we did want to just touch on, and we didn't have time before the meeting, was to ensure that Marine and Environmental Services got an opportunity to weigh in on the application as it stands. So we've got a little bit of work to do in the meantime. Unfortunately, the drainage calculations weren't sent to engineering with the referral, so we, it's in his, in his staff report, he seems to indicate that we weren't able to get it to him. So we've got a little bit of work on our end. If you're comfortable with the application as it stands, which we generally are as well, you can ask us to provide a positive draft motion for the next meeting, and in between time, we can do all the work that we were going to try to get done for this evening. Drainage, MES, and any outstanding other items.
Landscaping waiver.
The landscaping waiver. Thank you.
I think that generally, since we don't really have any questions, I think we can ask the staff to put together an approval contingent upon, I mean, we wouldn't vote on it unless the staff has gotten everything that they need to do to give us the approval at that point. Does that make sense?
Yes. They're doing a nice job at that site.
Yeah, I visited the site also. Looks great.
Mm-hmm. So I think those last few things before the 14th, I'm sure they're going to be done, so we just need to have an approval at that point. Do you need any kind of a formal vote to ask you to do that?
I don't necessarily think we need a formal vote, but perhaps just an indication that you're okay with a landscaping waiver if it were to come in?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll work with them to make sure we get it on file.
We're all set with that.
Okay.
So then this will be continued to the 14th.
Yep.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. We just want to make sure we take any public comments if there are.
Okay, yes. Any public comments for this hearing, please? Seeing none, I think we're all set. Okay?
Yep.
All right. Next hearing is for Sean Riley, Site Plan Review Application to approve an existing detached accessory dwelling unit at 71 Oyster Pond Road. And Tom, can you read the notice, please?
Yes, this was published, the publishing date was 9/5/25, and 12 abutters. We sent this notice by regular mail.
Thank you. So anyone here for the applicant?
I'm Sean Riley, and we are just looking to get this ADU approved. The house is sold or is under contract, and we're looking to get it approved as an ADU before the next buyer comes in.
Okay. Jim?
I think it's fine, but I just have a question. How did this get permitted? How did this get permitted?
Well, I don't...
Was it a...
I don't know the backstory.
Okay, so that happens from time to time. I just...
Yeah, so they're here to formalize.
They're going to fix it. I just, I mean, I've seen the property go, "Well, this is great," but they don't have any paperwork. That's all. They need the paperwork.
Meets all the requirements.
It meets it, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
So we recommended approval of it. I had prepared a draft motion for you, but you don't seem to have it this evening. It's been a day.
The system's down here. It's made up all of the...
So we would ask you to do a motion for our next meeting.
We could certainly have that ready for you, yeah.
Okay.
Pretty rustic. It's nice.
Jim, Ann Edwards has owned the property forever and ever and ever, so I think it probably just kind of happened.
So we need a vote for that, Jim?
Yeah, I don't think you need a vote, but perhaps just, you know, clarity for the applicant. So it, the board is generally in acceptance of this application. What they'll do is read your official acceptance and vote on the determination at the next meeting at October 14th.
Okay.
If that works for you. And that will officially put it into the record, and then we give you a copy.
Okay. Is there any, will I, if there's anything that I need to do before that, will I not know? Okay.
And you don't need to attend the meeting.
Okay. Is there any chance of getting that approval to happen tonight? Or a vote to happen tonight?
If the board would be so inclined to allow me to run to the printer...
Do you have a sale you have to do this for?
Yes, yeah, it's under contract, and we didn't realize exactly what the steps were, so.
I don't have a problem. I know it's our policy to make, wait, and do it, but this has been here all the time.
And it meets all the requirements, and we have, we have a decision ready.
Yeah, I don't...
Probably just on the printer. So you give me two minutes.
What are you guys, John? Are you okay with that?
Well, we'll take a two-minute recess.
Okay.
Pass the donuts.
Thank you.
We're supposed to have it by 4 o'clock today.
Big.
So if everyone's going to... Did you give him one?
But you have a copy after we finalize it.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Back in session again. So we have a motion here for the Planning Board to vote to approve the application of Sean Riley. Tom, do you want to read this, please?
Motion that the Planning Board votes to approve the application of Sean Riley to formalize an existing detached one-bedroom accessory dwelling unit located at 71 Oyster Pond Road under Section 240-12.2 Site Plan Review of the Zoning Bylaw. With the following findings and conditions. Findings: The applicant is seeking approval of an existing one-bedroom detached accessory dwelling unit located on the property. Said unit, proposed at 863 square feet, will be 40.8% of the principal dwelling, therefore complying with Section 240-9.1 of the zoning bylaw. The site plan and existing photographs show ample room for vehicle parking for the proposed ADU and existing dwelling unit, therefore complying with Section 240-9.1C and Section 240-14.1E of the zoning bylaw respectively. The applicant recently installed a five-bedroom septic system, and according to the Health Department referral, the total number of bedrooms on the lot should not exceed five bedrooms. Although there were letters of opposition received and comments made during the board's public meeting, the board has determined that the applicant has adequately addressed the issues raised. Page two. The board finds that the information provided by the applicant conforms to all the requirements of Sections 240-9.1 and 240-12.2 of the zoning bylaw. Conditions: Number one, the plan shall be constructed as approved. Any changes shall be reviewed by the Planning Board to determine if a modification of this decision is necessary. Number two, construction activities shall not cause erosion, two, or sedimentation into the abutting properties and town right-of-way. Number three, any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town department. Number four, the applicant shall contact the Engineering Division for address assignment for the new unit prior to applying for a building permit. Upon completion of construction, the applicant shall post the address for this building per Section 99-1 of the town code. Number five, the project shall meet all applicable standards set forth in the Building Code as determined by the Building Commissioner. Number six, weekly and monthly rentals, parentheses, so-called summer rentals, are expressly prohibited. Number seven, pursuant to Section 240-12.2 of the zoning bylaw, this Site Plan Review decision shall lapse three years from the date it is granted if substantial use thereof has not sooner commenced, except for good cause. The determination of good cause shall be made by the Planning Board. Number eight, the applicant shall contact the Assessors Office for inspection of the ADU prior to certificate of occupancy. Go on to page three. And number nine, the applicant shall obtain the required rental registration from the Health Department prior to renting the ADU.
Second?
If I may, just a point of clarification. So in error under the abutter and public comment section, there were no letters of opposition that were received.
I was going to say, where did I miss that? I was going to ask that question.
I suggest that language be changed to, no letters of opposition were received, and the board has determined the applicant has...
You were predicting what was going to happen tonight.
So just an error in that comment.
Do we have a corrected motion?
Yeah.
And we have a second. Any other questions? Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
We added a new special condition. Special condition, rental permit? Very good. Yeah.
Yes.
Next we have on the agenda Raphael Sidin, Site Plan Review as a continuation. And Tom, can you read the letter, please?
So, Mr. Chairman, for the record, the applicant has requested a continuance to the October 14th meeting and has also asked for an extension for the decision deadline for the Site Plan Review application. So Tom can read the letter and to the record.
All right, thank you.
September 22nd, 2025. Jed Cornoch, AICP Community Development Director, 59th Town Hall Square, Falmouth, Mass., 02540. Re 683 Main Street Site Plan Review and Special Permit Application. Dear Mr. Cornoch, please accept this letter as a formal request to continue this matter from the Planning Board's September 23rd, 2025 meeting to their October 14th, 2025 meeting. Our design company finalized the plans, however, was unable to provide them in time to meet the board's deadline. Additionally, I would like to extend the board's decision deadline for the Site Plan Review application to October 31st, 2025. Please do not hesitate to contact me with any questions. Sincerely, and then there's a signature.
The applicant.
Thank you, Tom. So we need any discussion or, you know, some of the continuation? Make it a motion, please?
So I move that we accept the applicant's request to continue this matter to October 14th and to extend the board's decision deadline to October 31st.
Second.
Including the special permit there?
Yeah, both.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Thank you, Tom. Next on our agenda, we have the applicant is Cape Cod Aggregates Corporation, Site Plan Review Application, constructed contractor yard consisting of two host buildings and associated parking. 3,990 square foot building intended for contractors' bays, and a 5,400 square foot building to include a scale house, garage, and accessory office used at Zero Thomas Landers Road. Tom, can you read the notice, please?
Yep. Public notice for this project was published on September 5th, 2025, and 12 abutters were notified by regular mail.
Thank you. And for the applicant, please?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Kevin Clower. I'm an attorney with Amen Clower Law Firm here in Falmouth, and I'm before you tonight representing the applicant, Cape Cod Aggregates Corp. They are the owner of this subject property at Zero Thomas B. Landers Road. I'm joined tonight by Dave Peterson from Cape Cod Aggregates, and also Raoul Lozardi Rivera from Cape Cod Islands Engineering. We're before the board tonight for two reasons. Site Plan Review of the proposed development, and also a special permit for the proposed use as a contractor's yard. I just want to start off by noting that we received the staff report on Friday, the 19th, and we received the engineering referral late this afternoon, so we have not had the opportunity to fully review and respond as of yet. So we'd like to use this evening as generally an introduction to review the plans and the proposals, see if the board has any questions, and intend to come back with any necessary revisions to the plans responding to any comments or concerns of the board, as well as the referrals from the engineering and staff. So this property is located at Zero Thomas B. Landers and consists of two...
You have a question?
Kevin, before you go any further, in preparation for tonight's meeting, I looked up Zero Thomas Landers Road, and on the Google map, it turns up at the corner of Sandwich Road and Thomas Landers Road, and I wonder if you could clarify for us the exact location of this project?
I'd be happy to. Actually, you kind of stole my thunder, Ms. Harris.
Oh, sorry.
Because that was, that was part of my next little bit of spiel. There are, anytime we have an undeveloped parcel, they're typically referred to as Zero Blank Road, Main Street, Thomas B. Landers. So what we do is we identify them by the parcel number. These two parcels, both known as Thomas B. Landers, are just west of the Blacksmith Shop Road intersection with Thomas B. Landers. So if I can pull up, the easiest thing for me to do might be to pull up the GIS map. If you can get with me for one second here.
So it's just up from the corner.
Uh-huh. As you climb the hill.
Just to answer a question.
So it is this parcel right here, these two parcels right here. So located just east of the Tech Park and just west of the Blacksmith Shop Road intersection.
Right, so right on the corner of Blacksmith Shop Road and Thomas Landers, there is a house.
There is a house there, and then there's a parcel here.
But there's a space.
This parcel and this parcel are both part of this application.
Uh-huh. And how many feet would the buildings be, would the project be from that house?
651.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay. So this property consists of two parcels totaling 7.37 total acres, located just west of the Blacksmith Shop Road intersection. Really stole my thunder, Charlotte.
She was waiting for you.
We're boarded to the south by Blacksmith Shop Farm, which is owned by an affiliate of Cape Cod Aggregates, to the southwest by the town land... Really stole my thunder, Charlotte.
She was waiting for you.
We're boarded to the south by Blacksmith Shop Farm, which is owned by an affiliate of Cape Cod Aggregates, to the southwest by the Town Lanthill and Solar Array, to the west by another industrial parcel, also owned by the applicants, and to the north by Thomas B. Landers Road and just north of that, another parcel owned by Cape Cod Aggregates. To the east, there is a singular residential home, which is more than 650 feet from the closest point of development. Thomas B. Landers is considered one of the primary arteries in town and is an area generally designated for contractor yards and industrial uses. So the applicants are proposing a contractor yard here, utilizing both indoor and outdoor space as well as accessory office space, which is accessory to the contractor yard. So this contractor yard will include an area for the stockpiling of materials here on the western side, two commercial buildings, the first being 3,990 square feet, which is intended as parking bays for the commercial vehicles, and the second being 5,400 square feet, which included garage space, the scale house, and some accessory office space. The total area of building development is 9,390 square feet between the two buildings. Cape Cod Aggregates has been owned and operated by the LaRusso family since 1957. They've always had a presence here in Falmouth and as I've noted, own a number of parcels within this area. This proposal allows for a consolidation of what they already offer and is in harmony with the existing uses in the surrounding area. The buildings proposed allow for storage of equipment. They're industrial-style manufacturing with garage bays. Given the size of the building and the fact that we are requesting this as a contractor yard, this does require both site plan review and a special permit, both from this board. So as noted, this is 7.37 acres and zoned agricultural A. The proposed buildings result in lot coverage by structure of 3%, where 20% is allowed, by lot coverage by structures, paving, and parking of 15%, where 40% is allowed, both well under the maximums permitted. They comply with and generally far exceed all of the setback and lot coverage requirements. The calculated parking requirement is 22 spaces, which has been provided. And relative to traffic flow, most of this use already exists along Thomas B. Landers, which as I've noted is a main artery of the town and should have little to no change to existing traffic flow. In addition to the site plan review, the special permit is under 240-6.1B of the bylaw. Under this provision, a lot must contain at least three acres. There are 7.37 acres of this property. The front yard setback must be at least 50 feet and side yard and rear yard setbacks of at least 30 feet. Here, the front yard setback is 51 feet. The side yard to the west is 396 feet. The side yard to the east is over 650 feet and the rear yard setback to the south is over 51 feet. Contractor yard can't be within 300 feet of a single-family district or within 300 feet of an existing dwelling. As I've noted, this is more than 650 feet to the nearest dwelling and not close to any single-family districts. The planning board must find that the contractor's yard, that the operation of the contractor's yard, including traffic between the yard and arterial roadways, of which Thomas B. Landers is one, will not adversely impact neighborhood, which is not applicable in this case. Having reviewed the staff report, we can provide all the requested information, specifically they've requested a lighting plan and site distances for the driveway. My understanding is that those exceed 500 feet in both directions, as well as an analysis of development impact and that we reach out to the Marine and Environmental Services regarding the wildlife court. All of those things we can accomplish prior to the next hearing. I believe those are the only outstanding items within that report. Regarding the engineering referral, with our application, we did submit some of the materials that they noted as missing. Specifically, we had already submitted a stormwater calculation and a landscaping plan, but they had said that those weren't, that they were there. Beyond that, none of the items requested seem problematic and can certainly be addressed with minor edits to the plans. This proposal is in line with the surrounding area, allowing for contractor yard on a street of many similar uses and similar to many of the abutting parcels. The applicants are seeking to continue their operations, continue to invest in the community, continue operations as they have existed for almost 70 years by finding new ways to improve those operations. I believe this project meets the criteria for site plan review approval as well as a special permit for contractor yard pursuant to 6.1B. Aye along with Raul and Dave, would be glad to address any questions that you might have. If there are no questions or concerns, we'd certainly request a continuation to the next hearing so we can respond adequately to the staff report and engineering referral.
Thank you. I'm sure we have some questions for you. Tom? Paul? Wait a minute, I just saw him.
I do.
Okay, all right.
Okay. I have never heard the term "scale house." What is that?
So what you see here is outside of the building, there is going to be a ground-mounted truck scale. And that is used to weigh materials coming in and out of the site. That's how they charge, per tonnage. So the scale house is the operations of the scale. It's the counterweights that operate the ground-mounted scale.
Never heard that term before. And then you've already got a number of the offices designated for various people, too, it looks like.
That is the thought.
Okay. Now you've got another term here. I don't know what it means as far as usage. Gallery.
It's a grush.
Thank you.
You're not gonna have art there?
I mean, if only we knew an art dealer who had excess art that we could purloin.
Charlotte, any questions?
No, I was all ready to hop all over you if you were on the corner of Sandwich Road.
That was really alarming. But I'm wondering now, what, you've made one part of this green. Was there some intention in the green?
Yeah, so what's shown here is preserve natural vegetation for screening. So the idea being to, this is, actually, I'll go back to the site plan. Which way am I facing here? This is what we're looking at here, down this way. And the idea being to preserve a lot of the natural vegetation there. Once you have the opening, this would all be left vegetated to provide as much screening as possible of the site from Thomas B. Landers.
That's great. Thank you.
Jim, any questions?
In fact, all the builders along that road, almost without exception, have managed to do that so that even though it's our industrial road, it has maintained a really nice character.
Thank you. Jim, any questions?
Nope.
John?
Yes?
You asked for my comment. When I first saw the agenda, I thought we'd be here 10 o'clock tonight. Doing very well, it's only 7 o'clock.
We can slow down.
We're not through this yet, Mr. Driver.
We can slow down, don't worry. So, you have any comments?
That's it.
Okay. So speak slowly when I ask you this question, Kevin. Kevin, can you explain the scale for the scale house? I mean, is there gonna be any mining on the property?
No, so this is, this is a contractor's yard. So, why I'm not focusing, I'm not sure. So there is gonna be material stockpile on the western part of the site. And as that material is loaded and sold, it's weighed on the trucks coming, going out to determine, you know, we know what the starting weight of the truck is and we know what the weight, then we know what the weight of the materials are. And that's how the charges are done. So, you know, you buy a certain amount of tons of dense grade or rock or whatever you may be purchasing.
So the material's gonna come from another site and be stored there? Okay.
This is not, it's not a mining site. They're not stripping this in.
I just don't understand why there were scales there if it wasn't something to weigh. So now I understand that. And the garage itself, it's just gonna be for repair of equipment or?
Not even repair, it's storage. So we'll have interior storage here, we'll have interior storage here, and then there'll be outside parking as well.
And storage of vehicles?
Yes.
Okay.
And one of the things I spoke to Mr. Tondera about today is providing a list of some of the vehicles that'll be stored there.
Okay, that'd be much appreciated. Okay. Staff?
Did you want the applicant to go over the landscaping plan? Did you have any comments or questions on that?
I think he mentioned that it's gonna be the existing vegetation.
So they've actually submitted a landscaping plan along with the application. Labeled landscaping plan. Landscape plan.
Yep. Mostly around the parking area.
So as I mentioned, a lot of the natural vegetation's gonna be left along the street in order to keep that as obscurance of the site as much as possible. And in the developed areas, they're gonna have some green space between the two buildings as well as what we'll call beautification around the parking areas.
Any else have any questions about that? Any comments? John, go ahead, please.
What takes place on the land immediately behind it? Not on this lot, but immediately behind it to the south?
That's Blacksmith Shop Farm.
All of it?
I believe so, yeah. If we look at the, I'm glad I pulled this up. So this is Blacksmith Shop Farm here and on this parcel here. So those two parcels are the entirety of Blacksmith Shop Farm, which are owned by a related company.
Well, I'm familiar with that from taking stuff over there to dump it, so.
Didn't realize it was that close.
It's that curve in Blacksmith Shop that's deceiving.
Yeah, something.
Kevin, the drainage area that's on the plan, where does it gonna be the depth of that?
Raul will speak to that.
Good evening, for the record, Raul Lizardi from Cape Pen Islands Engineering, the engineers for this project. And the plan does have a detail showing the depths of this system, but just roughly, the rim or the high ridge of this drain basin is at elevation 80 and the bottom is at elevation 75. So it's a five-foot depression. And the whole purpose for this is promoting infiltration into the ground after it goes through the vegetation that's gonna be there. The vegetation there is not trees or shrubs. It's mostly like a meadow. It will be mowed just for maintenance purposes, but that meadow is what's gonna be absorbing nutrients and so forth from the drainage.
And on a large storm, what do you think the depth of the water would be in there?
So, right, and in the details, we show the typical 100-year design storm. The flood level stage is four feet of water. It's on page, on sheet three of the set of plans. There's a cross-section of the detail that shows that particular storm design now. The 100-year storm design is not the typical storm design we design here in Falmouth. Usually it's a 25-year storm. But we have the room to put that storm in there, so we did.
They got, put any fencing around it?
So it's not required, but if the applicant wants to put a fencing, it could be done.
I mentioned this a couple times before. We had a situation like this over by the Falmouth Mall and there was a drowning there. A couple of young boys, there was ice on it and they were walking across and one of them got trapped under the ice. He was like nine or 10 years old. So I always like to make the applicant aware of this and hate to see it. I know you're way out in the country, you're way out in the woods, but, you know, boys, when they're out there fooling around, they can find a spot like this and. I appreciate that.
And just for a comparison, I am familiar with the Falmouth Mall. That is a wet basin, which, the difference between that one and this one, this is a dry basin. The intention is for it to dry out. That one, unless there's a really bad drought, like maybe today, it's intended to hold water at all times. This one is, that's not the intent here, but we understand the concerns.
Yeah, I just, I know everyone would hate to see something like this happen when it could have been prevented, so. All right. So no other questions? Jed?
Yeah, so, you know, just briefly looking at the staff report, we do need to follow up with fire, MES, and it appears the board of health, maybe some outstanding items, but I'm confident we can get that done in between now and October 14th. And then, of course, having the Engineering Division look over the drainage calculations.
Yes. Need a motion to?
If the applicant's okay with a continuance to October 14th, which I think I heard him say, then.
Let me, I'm gonna just check the date, but that sounds perfectly fine.
Did you mention something about the lighting plan?
We will have a lighting plan.
Okay, thank you.
And there were several items. Said he could address them.
Yeah, no issue with the voting.
Okay. I would suggest that-
A public comment?
Public comment.
I always forget the public. All right, hearing none. Want to make a motion here to continue?
To continue.
So you, yeah, so just for clarity's sake, you do have a special permit, public hearing open. I would suggest you just continue that to the 14th as well as the site plan review application.
I wasn't gonna make a separate presentation, just same.
Oh, I understand.
So I move that we continue both the special permit application and the site plan review application to October 14th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
All right, thank you very much. We appreciate your time this evening.
You're welcome, thank you.
Jed, I'd like to make a comment.
Certainly.
Noting the time and what a long agenda we've just whipped through, it's completely based on the thorough work of the staff in advance, so thank you.
Absolutely.
You're welcome.
Yes, thank you.
Some bumps in the road this evening, but that's okay.
But we're not finished yet.
No, but what appeared to be the time-consuming part has gone by.
Kevin, any tomatoes?
I was nervous of the tomatoes because I didn't know what to do.
I grew them, organically grown.
I stepped out of line, I didn't know where to put them.
They're not rotten, go get some.
Okay, now we're at the point where we're gonna have a planning board discussion. We're gonna discuss November Annual Town Meeting articles, recommendations.
You can't give us tomatoes, but you can give him tomatoes.
One day I'll throw them around with me also.
This is not my day.
Now the fun part.
For the record, Jed Kornok, Community Development Director. So in your packet are the five articles, sorry, one, two, three, five articles for town meeting, all of which you recently, on October 26th, I believe, approved to go to the warrant. Tonight, we are talking about the recommendations and explanations. So you should have a copy of them. Let us know if you don't have them. So they were additional information that was passed out next to your packet information. So it should be sitting on your desk. There should be a paper clip.
Wait a minute.
Very good.
Yes.
So just as a recap, Article 22 proposes to eliminate a section within the zoning bylaw. It's 240, Section 5.1C, which will eliminate the special permit allowance. It's 240, Section 5.1(c), which will eliminate the special permit allowance, and we've talked about this in the past, the recommendation for all of these articles are to approve the article as presented or as printed in the warrant, so no changes have been made since the close of the public hearing. So there's that standard recommendation. Each of the explanations essentially lays out what the article is attempting to do. So some of them are a little wordy. I didn't plan on reading them for you, although we do have extra time tonight.
Well, we don't need it.
But essentially, the explanation lays out which each article is attempting to do. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
We've heard all these before, right?
Yes.
This is not new.
Right. So what I'll do is I'll just call up the articles for the folks who may be looking or watching at home. If anyone's interested, they go to the Board and Committees menu, click on Planning Board, and then on the far left, there are Town Meeting zoning articles. And these are the five articles which are going to be in the Town Meeting warrant. And as I mentioned, the first one is making this change, as shown up on the screen, eliminating a special permit allowance. Second is the Business District Use Table, again, allowing accessory dwelling units by right in each one of the business districts. The third is a...
Jed, let me lead him off as the article number, please.
Oh, sure.
So we did Article 22, Article 23, now we're in 24.
Right, so Article 22 is the 5.1(c). Article 23 is the Business District Use Table. Article 24 is a, not a wholesale rewrite, but a lot of changes to the accessory dwelling unit bylaw, encompasses a lot of different changes, which we've gone through in the past. Article 25 is a change, as shown on the screen while it loads. It's a change to the maximum building height table, eliminating two overlay district languages, or two overlay district items that are included in the use table, but also found somewhere else in the bylaw, and that is not loading for us. And then Article 26, which may also not load, is the change to the accessory structures section, which is essentially removing accessory apartment, the restriction on accessory apartments being able to go up to 25 feet via special permit. So once that loads, folks at home will be able to see it, but this is the maximum height table, removing this language, and then the accessory structures will be removing the accessory apartment section that doesn't allow for it. So like I said, the explanation essentially just describes what the article is intended to do.
Sean?
I think it might be handy for Town Meeting on Article 24 to mark the ones that were not required by the state, because most of these changes are just to make us conform to the new state ADU law. So if you were to mark the ones that are not required by the state, it'd make it easier to explain to Town Meeting.
Good point.
So the ones that were original is essentially what you're getting at?
Yeah, if you're making any changes to the original, are all these changes only to be in conformity with the state, or there's some others? And I think there are a couple of others.
No, the vast majority of them are intended to just be in compliance with the state regulations.
Right, so where are the ones that aren't?
The only ones that, I guess, were not changed were, for example, an ADU, the footprint of the new detached ADU cannot exceed that of the principal dwelling. So you've had that language in there for quite a while, but there's not a law in here that actually remains. A lot of the new language came from either the regulations, or as I've described, the model bylaw that the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities published in February approximately.
So it'd be true to say that it's either in the original...
Correct.
Or it's changed because of state action.
Correct.
Of it.
That makes it much easier to present.
That's an easy way to say it, yes.
Yeah.
To describe it.
Of course, John will be presenting all of this at Town Meeting at the podium.
From memory.
From memory.
And answering all questions.
Yes.
Wait a minute, you're gonna be there?
Way at the back.
You're a Town Meeting member? You can answer a few questions.
I'm gonna ask the mean ones.
Okay, no donors for you tonight?
So do you want to go through this one by one and recommend them to the warrant as printed?
I would suggest that if you're comfortable with all the explanation language, you could do it as a blanket, you can recommend all of them, or if you feel more comfortable doing them individually, you can do that too. You've got no edits to make.
We've been over this so many times.
Yeah, I think a blanket is...
So then, I would recommend all of the articles presented to us tonight as printed to the warrant.
Articles 22 to 26.
Yes, thank you.
In the form of a motion?
Yes.
Yes.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Second, thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just to clarify, you're recommending the recommendations?
Correct.
Not the articles themselves, just to clarify there.
Right, recommendations and explanations.
Okay.
Very good.
Thank you. Next, we have Planning Department report. I didn't know if you were gonna do the report, or...
I was gonna try to do it off of memory.
Oh, you have...
Didn't work. So Planning Department has been busy, very, very busy. We've been working on primarily the draft wayfinding plan, so we've got, a final comments have been incorporated into the final plan, so now we're just going through it with a fine-tooth comb and making sure that everything that we suggested has been incorporated. We should have a final plan by the end of the month, which is very exciting. And then, of course, we move into the next phase, which is actually designing a sign that we could potentially use, or a series of signs that we could use in the downtown area and along the Shining Sea Bike Way, as a way to direct traffic and get folks to and from shops, businesses, et cetera. So we're excited about that. We're also working on the community play space RFQ, so CPC voted $75,000 approximately for the all-inclusive playground that will now be housed at the Goodwill Park. So Melinda and I have been working on drafting that final RFQ, so that we can procure design services to develop the actual park itself, and then eventually go to construction and buying materials and whatnot. We've also been obviously working on zoning amendments. The next phase of our zoning amendments start now, because we're always planning for the next town meeting. So we've got a series of items we had hoped to wait for November, so November of '26, so that we could give Town Meeting a little bit of a break on zoning amendments, but there's been a couple of items that have come up that, in my opinion, should be dealt with sooner than that, but they're small. So we've been dealing with the new language and how we would approach the board and talk about some of that information. And of course, we're doing research on how other communities are handling ADUs, particularly ADU number two and beyond, so that we can present to you and start that conversation about how you want to handle that local process and what that might look like. How many ADUs do you want to have? What sizes do you want? What types of design metrics do you want to include? So a lot of that work has been ongoing this month and will probably continue until December, and we're anticipating starting that conversation with you around that time, perhaps in January, if not sooner. Do you have something else?
We hired a new preservation planner, so she's part-time, and she will be focusing on the Historical Commission and doing all the staff requirements and going to those meetings. So my shift, my focus will be shifting more towards planning and out of the historic portion.
Has she started?
She started yesterday.
Yep.
And she actually was on the Historical Commission, and she is now off the Commission and doing the planning position for it.
Would you say her name was?
Annie Dean.
Oh, Annie Dean.
Yeah.
Very excited. Yep.
Well, welcome aboard, Annie.
Yeah.
That's right.
So she's part-time.
Certainly knows the town.
She does.
John? What happened about getting a consultant for the comprehensive remake on the long-range comprehensive?
There you go, stealing more thunder.
The grant hasn't been awarded yet. I believe we hear either in October or November if we get the state grant.
They say October, so...
I think they said November.
So a public process would start next spring?
Yes, that would be the idea. So when you get the award, you move immediately into contracting and procuring a consultant, so it's a rapid-fire type situation. So we would anticipate going to the public with a list of events and all of that sometime in the spring, so that we can complete the process the following year, right before November Town Meeting, so that Town Meeting would have an opportunity to, if they so choose, review it and approve it. And then we're off and running with a new LCP. That's if all the stars align, but that's what we do, we plan for that.
This is good.
Yep.
Good. Any other comments or questions? Anything else from the staff to report? Want to get a little update on the One Cape Summit that you attended last week?
One Cape Summit was very good. Melinda and I attended the first day. I think, John, maybe you attended both days.
Both days, yes.
We sat in on a session about the Cape Cod Bridges. So MassDOT is moving ahead with design and environmental permitting for both bridges, even though the Bourne Bridge doesn't have dedicated funding as of yet. But their perspective is that, you know, if they can provide it as shovel-ready as possible, it would be a hard item to not fund in the future. And I think they've, they're also planning for, if they don't get funding, how would that look? But the goal is to replace both bridges. It will take quite a while to do so. So I've started a campaign to buy either a small plane or a helicopter, or some sort of hot air balloon, to get me over the bridge, but we're very excited to see those come to fruition.
Did they talk about the plan for the Bourne Bridge abolishing that rotary, or changing that into a cloverleaf or something?
They didn't get into the specifics of that. It was more about where they've started, how they've got there, and reassuring the public about, you know, the fact that they are committed to replacing both bridges.
Okay.
I believe, I can't remember the exact date, but next week, MassDOT is holding a public informational session on both bridges, and you'll be able to see the designs for not only the bridge themselves, but also the approaches, and, you know, you've probably seen it in the paper, they've already publicized the approach to the Sagamore Bridge, and how, you know, that whole traffic circulation will work. It's gonna be an immense construction project, so.
And that meaning next week is in Bourne?
Yes, it is in Bourne.
I'll tell you, just as an aside, every time I see evacuation ring and approach that rotary at the Bourne Bridge, I think I'm hunkering down. There is absolutely no way you would get across that bridge if there was an emergency evacuation. None.
It's tricky, and current conditions are even trickier now because of a traffic light that they put out at the tech school. So it's, we're working through it together. It's a group effort. But we also attended a really interesting session on taxing of ADUs and how the assessors look at ADUs and short-term rentals, sorry, not ADUs, Airbnb's, short-term rentals, in communities outside of Massachusetts. And so we heard from a gentleman from Colorado.
Urban Three.
Urban Three. And it was just a wealth of knowledge about how he's seen different communities tax these short-term rentals and what the implications might be to them or to the community as they tax them, either in an appropriate way, in his opinion, or a non-appropriate way. So that was a really interesting session. But we didn't attend Day Two, so I don't know, John, if you had anything about Day Two, but Day One was excellent.
Day Two was a lot about housing.
Okay.
And traffic control, road designs for small towns like Falmouth, Main Street, and how to improve the traffic flow, and actually also to increase traffic flow for the stores and shopkeepers, and it was very interesting, all of them were interesting, so. And the lieutenant governor spoke the first day also.
She was excellent.
She was excellent. And the seminar that we attended regarding the bridges was put on by the state, so it was directed. What I took from it was they were talking about hoping to start in about four years on the Sagamore Bridge, start construction. They're finalizing all the details, and they feel they have the funding already. And they said that once they start, they expect the construction time period to go from six to eight years for completion. So if it's eight years, that would be 12 years from now. And then they'll work on the Bourne Bridge.
I won't be around then.
Well...
It'd be somewhat of a miracle.
We better be here, that's all I can say. We want to use that bridge.
Well, lovely, but I don't think I'll be driving at 95, so.
Yeah, one of the interesting items, just recently was contacted by the Cape Cod Commission, who's looking to start up transportation management associations, so essentially carpooling. And I know of a few folks who travel over the bridge who work in Town Hall. So I think, you know, obviously, less cars, the better, coming over the bridge during the construction period. But, you know, I'm serious, I might invest in a hot air balloon. Be a lovely trip over and back. Imagine the sunsets.
They had a nice award for Tom Caher.
They did, that was nice.
You know, Transportation Secretary. Tom's from Falmouth, and his father was a selectman here in Falmouth when I first moved here. So I knew Tom not really well, but pretty well. Yes, Paul?
I just have a quick question. State Highway does not allow horseback riding, pedestrians, or bicycles. These bridges are state highways. And if you look at the Bragger Bridge in New Bedford, there is no provision for walkway, pull-off, or anything like that, just roadway. What I've seen about the design, preliminary design anyway, there's a provision for bicycle area. There's even an area you can pull off and look at the view.
Yes.
Which doesn't seem to make a lot of sense, but are they gonna address those kinds of issues with the final design?
Yes. Yes.
So they have to change the state law to allow people to walk?
Well, they...
And ride on state highways, bridges?
They need to do that everywhere they plan a project now, because they have a complete streets policy, which means every project that MassDOT puts money into and designs, they have to incorporate all road users, transit riders, pedestrians, bicyclists, you name it, where possible. So there are certain areas where you just can't accomplish that, so they do their best to incorporate those users in a different way. But every project that they do now, they have to incorporate those users.
Bragger Bridge has none of that.
It's an old project, so if they were ever to do a new Bragger Bridge or any improvements there, the improvements, it gets, you know, fuzzy, because some improvements can just be maintenance work, and sometimes maintenance work doesn't apply to complete streets, but if they're doing a full project, they have to incorporate that.
Thank you. Any other committee reports?
The SDR group meets tomorrow. We haven't met again since last I reported.
Okay. Paul? Um? Okay.
John, I wondered, just as sort of, in being on the Cape Cod Commission, does Cape Cod Commission keep track of which communities on the Cape, where they are as far as the 10% safe harbor?
Not that I'm aware of, because I've mentioned them before, that Falmouth is reached there, and they're quite surprised. But I'm not saying they don't, I'm just saying, the people I spoke with were surprised by that.
Is there anywhere where that can be looked up?
I would imagine on their webpage, they have a...
Of each town?
I don't know about each town, but you could call and ask. They'll give some people's names and numbers to call.
Oh, okay. Jed seems to know.
John? So, I do have a comment. Although not part of the agenda, we'll just take a few minutes.
Thank you.
Just to answer the question. So the answer is yes. The housing page on the town website has the most recent information as it relates to the SHI. So, most recent SHI of 8/22/25. Kim usually posts it whenever she receives a new list, and so you can just click that link, and there's the official list from the state. Down the bottom is the percentage.
Read you the, I can't read it from here, is that for each of the Cape communities?
Nope, that's just for Falmouth.
Oh.
She was asking about other towns.
Each towns, okay. So if you're interested in that, you can contact the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. I don't know if they would give it to a member of the public, or if it has to be obtained by the municipality, but you can certainly ask them.
Well, you're the municipality, maybe you could ask.
We typically only get Falmouth's information, but we could certainly reach out.
Thank you.
Yep.
I got a question. The list you had on before, how do you get on that list? Is it when you get a building permit? What's the qualification for the project to be on that list?
Yeah, so it's complicated. You first are eligible to be on the list when the comprehensive permit is filed. So it's typically a 40B that gets listed on the SHI because it was a requirement. And so as soon as the comprehensive permit is issued, those units are eligible to go onto the SHI. They then are allowed to stay there for a year period. If a building permit is not pulled within that period of time, they then come off the list. Once the building permit is issued, they can go back onto the list. So it's complicated.
Police is, whether they have permits or not?
So it is a joint effort between the municipality and... So it is a joint effort between the municipality and the state. So the state essentially publicizes what the municipality gives them, typically. So when we know that something's about to fall off the list, our responsibility is to let the state know that this hasn't been achieved. They sometimes are aware of it as well because they're monitoring the list based on the new information that was presented to them from the municipality. So it's a joint effort, if that makes sense.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's it, Jim?
Yep.
Paul, you had a comment you'd like to make?
Yeah. It's really not a completely report, but at the joint meeting between the Planning Board and the Select Board, the water system demand projections were presented at the beginning of that project. I raised my hand to make a comment, and I wasn't called on. They went into housing, and I didn't object to that. But I'd like to make a comment on that, if I may.
Certainly.
The report is very well done. And what they did take was the 2020 census and project that out to 2045 and come up with a total of 47,000-plus people. And they looked at the studies, the water studies the state had done, and come up with the per-capital consumption, multiplied the two, so in 2045, they would have a demand, both max day and average day of water supply. And that's traditional way of doing it. My concern, and I think it's a concern for the Planning Board, is demographics are changing. We have the town pushing for more affordable housing. Every day, we come in for ADUs, which are increasing the density. We're getting applications for large projects like Sandwich Road and Main Street. So I think the population projections are going to be a little low. So what I would suggest we do is that, once we get to the census 2030, take a good, hard look at this. Because the results they came up with is, well, if we change the permit a little bit, we're going to have enough water for that. I don't believe that's going to be the case. So I think water is going to become the limiting factor on development here in the town of Falmouth. I'd just like to throw that out for people to think about it. It's not a criticism of what's been done at all. But I think demographics are really changing in this town. And there's colloquial evidence, there's a lot more people here year-round in addition to that, since COVID particularly.
Right.
So I think it's going to be a concern for the Planning Board.
All right. Thank you. Good point. All right. Now we will have, any other committee reports? Wherever you went to that. Okay. So announcements? Any announcements?
I don't have an announcement, but maybe the future agenda items, we talk about the November meeting schedule?
So anybody else have announcements?
Oh, I guess I do. I will be gone for the month of October. So I think I'm going to miss two meetings.
You could attend by Zoom.
I'll make an effort.
Get you in. And that's where you're going to go? They don't have Zoom.
I feel a lot of commitment there.
I don't think there's good connectivity from where I'm going.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. So any future agenda items?
So we should probably talk about the November schedule. So...
That's true.
So your regularly scheduled meetings for November would fall on the 11th and the 25th. The 11th is Veterans Day, so we can't have a meeting then. The 25th is two days before Thanksgiving. So first and foremost, I wanted to try and figure out whether or not the board members are going to be available two days before Thanksgiving, or if that's going to be an issue. And if it's not, that's great. We can fit that meeting in. And then the 18th is potentially Day Two of Town Meeting. So the 18th falls between the 11th and the 25th. So we can't schedule a meeting then. So essentially, what I'm saying is we'd need to reschedule the 11th to potentially the November 4th meeting date. And I wanted to make sure that there's availability for the 4th and potentially the 25th.
We really need to meet on the 4th because you have a project that has to...
Yes.
Get started.
Yes.
An application. Does the 4th work for everybody? Works for me. Paul?
Okay.
I think so.
Okay.
And the 25th seems like it's the same thing. Everyone's generally available? Okay. Great.
Good.
Perfect.
And we'll do the 4th and the 25th of November.
I'll bring pumpkins, then. I'm kidding. I don't have any pumpkins. I just...
Okay. Any future agenda items? No? General Correspondence?
So...
September 10th to the 23rd?
You should all be aware, and again, this is something that I meant to print for you, but I neglected to, so we'll email you a copy. You should be aware that the Cape Cod Commission recently, John has a copy as the Chair of the Board. They recently approved the Cape Cod Country Club solar project as a development of regional impact. So the official appeal period started, I believe, two days ago, and that will run for 30 days. So as soon as that appeal period is over, and provided that there aren't any appeals filed, that application will then become, coming back before the Planning Board's site plan review. So that's part of the reason why we wanted to try and work out that November schedule because it's likely to fall within that time range. So we will provide a copy of the decision to each one of you in general correspondence.
And when they come in front of the board, it's going to be for site plan review?
Correct.
Okay. All right. That's it for general correspondence. And then the next meeting is October 14th. And one after is October 28th. Other than that, any motion to adjourn?
Salute.
Second?